The February 25th, 2002, meeting of the Holtham City Council is called to order. Our first item of business tonight is the invocation and the pledge. It is my privilege to lead the invocation, and we have a young man here tonight to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And we'll introduce him in just a moment. He's a Boy Scout working on one of his merit badges, and we'll talk about that after he leads us in the pledge. Alan Grammer will be leading us in the pledge. And Alan, if you will join me at the podium, I'll lead the invocation from there, and you lead the pledge from there. And if you would, ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Our Father, we ask your blessings tonight as we come here as public servants to address items of business coming before this city. That's a big job, and we ask your blessings on us. Give us wisdom, and insight, and patience as we proceed through the process tonight. In your name we pray, amen. At the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you would, be seated. And I want Mr. Grammer to take a little bit about himself. First of all, I will tell you, his parents, Tom and Laurie Grammer, are here tonight on the back seat. And if you all would, raise your hand or stand up. We're very happy to have you. And Alan, tell us what troop you're with, and also what merit badge you're working on tonight.
I'm with Boy Scout Troop 98, and I'm working on my citizenship in the community merit badge.
Thank you very much. We're very happy to have you here and thank you for your commitment. I believe you have an oath of office to administer.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Richard Torres.
I, Richard Torres.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of City Manager, Holtham City, Tarrant County, Texas.
Of the Office of City Manager, Holtham City, Tarrant County, Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability preserve.
And will to the best of my ability preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God. Thank you very much.
Mr. Torres is now officially our new City Manager. We are very pleased to have this gentleman in Holtham City. He's been here about a week, and I think his task over the last week has been kind of like the man standing beside the freight train that was going about 70 miles an hour, and he's got to reach out and grab hold. We are very impressed with Mr. Torres, and we're very excited to introduce him to you at this time, and to have an opportunity to begin the next chapter in Holtham City's history under his leadership as the City Manager. Mr. Torres, any comments you'd like to make at this time?
Mayor and Council, I did in fact jump on a fairly fast-moving train last week, and I was only bruised mildly, so I feel like I'm on board now, and we're moving along at a pretty good pace. I want you all to know, Council, citizen, staff, that I'm very pleased to be here. I feel it's an honor and a privilege to be working here for the City of Holtham City. There are a lot of great things going on. It's a very dynamic time for the City of Holtham City, much more so than probably the city's ever experienced. There's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of projects out there that are going to have to be accomplished in a timely manner and on budget, and there's going to be a lot of oversight. I expect that I'm going to be very busy for quite some time, but I'm very pleased with that kind of activity, and I really believe that it is a good thing, not only for me, but for my family. Later in the summer, when they join me, I think it'll be a little more complete package, but in the meantime, I think we'll get along just fine. And again, thank you very much for the opportunity we've given.
Well, again, Mr. Torres, welcome to Holtham City. And I'd like to begin, if I could, Councilmember Henderson. Any comments? And we'll just come right on around the table.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Well, first, Richard, I want to welcome you to Holtham City. I'm really excited that you're here, and your feet are on the ground and ready to roll. And also excited with your enthusiasm that you have, that you brought to us from Copper's Cove. And I'm just looking forward to the next, hopefully, several years to work with you and do business with you. And I'm sure the citizens and the staff really appreciate what you bring to them. Thanks again.
Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Torres, first of all, I want to tell you why you're welcome to Holtham City. Mr. Torres reigns from Texas A&amp;M. He's an Aggie. That's a plus. He's got a beautiful wife and four children that will be joining the community very soon. His resume, his background, all the people we checked, the references, were just way above what we were looking for. He's got an awful big pair of shoes to fill. Former City Manager wore about a 12. But I'm sure that you can fill those shoes very easily. I spent part of the day Friday with Mr. Torres, and I like a bunch of the ideas he has. He's down home. I think he can work with all our staff. He can work with anybody that needs to. And he does show to have a care and a love for where he works at, so welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Patino.
Mr. Torres, welcome aboard, and welcome to our great city. And I'm looking forward to work together, you and I, and the rest of the council, and our mayor, so that we can together be able to give our citizens a better way of life. I'm really looking forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Avery?
Mr. Torres, I'd like to reiterate what's already been said, and just to say I'm excited about working with you, and wish you good luck.
Mr. Torres, I'd just like to welcome you aboard. We're glad to have you. From all we've heard, we're looking for big things to happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Hurley. Councilmember Markham.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, your first impressions of people are, according to the old saying, the best. My first impressions of Mr. Torres was that he was enthusiastic about his work. He was more than knowledgeable about his work, and he had a very strong work ethic, which impressed me. And I'm glad that he's in Holtham City. I think he will be good for Holtham City, and I think Holtham City will be good for him. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Councilmember Jennings is not able to be here tonight. He has the flu, and he is one sick young man. And we regret that. I know he would like to have an opportunity to welcome our new City Manager, and we'll give him that opportunity at the next council meeting to do so. But, Mr. Torres, again, welcome to Holtham City. We're excited about what lies ahead.
Thank you. Me too, Mayor. Ready to go to work.
If I could, our acting City Manager, interim City Manager, Pat Elfrink, would you please come forward and join me at the podium at this time, please? This man you see standing before us tonight is a gentleman and a real professional. And he has been at the helm here in Holtham City for the last 10 months.
10 months, almost exactly.
Almost exactly 10 months. And we owe a great debt of gratitude to Mr. Elfrink. He always responded to anything I needed in a very professional manner. He is a genius when it comes to financial things, and I stand amazed at people. Sometimes we call them bean counters, but I tell you what, this man can do that, but he can do a whole lot more, too. The people who control the purse strings are the heart and the soul of whatever the organization is. And somebody that can do that well, and Pat is just an outstanding gentleman. And I want to thank him, and the council will have an opportunity here in a moment to express each one's individual thanks to you, Pat. But thank you very, very much. We have a couple of tokens of our appreciation we want to present to you at this time. We hope every time you look at this clock, you will thank the council, you will thank the time you've spent here in Holtham City as our interim City Manager, and you will remember that with great fondness. I also have something that you didn't know.
No, I wondered where did that went?
What we have here is his name tag, Pat Elfrink, interim City Manager. Came right off from up here in front of the position. Plus, this is the cover on the council packet. Pat Elfrink, interim City Manager, Holtham City, Texas. Pat, thank you very, very much for the service you've rendered to the City of Holtham City, to the council, to the staff. We all were very benefited by your leadership during the time that you were acting as interim City Manager. And we're looking forward to the great work you continue to do in our finance area. And would you like to address the council at this time, and the citizens? And if you will remain standing while the members of the council have some comments?
Thank you very much for your kind words, Mr. Mayor. I can't tell the council or the citizens or the staff enough how much I really appreciated and counted on the support of every single employee, our department heads, and our elected officials to get the job done over the past 10 months. It was a very challenging experience. It was a very good professional experience for me. I'm a better finance director for it. I'd like to say that I hope I'll be able to help Mr. Torres that much better, because I know what it's like to sit on his side of the desk. I'll do my very best to fulfill your expectations of me, Mr. Mayor, and I just thank you very much for these very, very nice gifts that you have here tonight. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could, we will reverse the order we went in a moment ago. And Councilmember Markham, if you have a comment you'd like to share with Mr. Elfrink at this time, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Monday morning was Mr. Torres' first day on the job. Came up here, shook his hand, and told him welcome aboard, and didn't take much of his time. I looked for Pat. He was not in his office, and I waited a couple of hours, picked up the phone, and I called him. And I wanted to tell him, you know, "Pat, thank you." Pat stepped, was asked to do a job, and he done it to the best of his ability for a relatively fairly long period of time being an interim City Manager. I think it was a very good learning curve for Pat. At times, it's difficult dealing with eight different personalities on the council, including the mayor. When you don't know individuals real well, it takes time to acclimate yourself. But Pat stepped into a rough job, and he handled it superbly. And again, Pat, just like I told you the other morning on the phone, "Thank you, sir. Job well done."
Thank you.
Councilmember Hurley?
Pat, I've had the opportunity in my background to have sat in both of the jobs that you've got, Pat. And both of them are challenging. Personally, I think you did an outstanding job as interim City Manager, as well as the job you do as Finance Director. Except now, we'll probably have your full talents towards finance, and I think we're grateful for that. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Pat, this is kind of a reiterating of Bob and Dooley instead. You did an excellent job, an outstanding job as our interim City Manager, and I again would like to thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Patino?
Pat, on behalf of all the citizens of Holtham City, I want to give you a very sincere thank you. Personally, I want to thank you for your unsophisticated role while performing the duty of interim manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams. Mayor Protem Williams?
Mr. Pat Elfrink, I want to thank you for the job that you've done. We've become very close in the last 10 months, working together. And before I go any further, I want to thank your wife for sharing this with us, because it took a lot of time out of her life, so thank you for that as well.
Thank you for thinking of her, yes. Thank you.
Well, I saw how you were looking at us, and one of us was... It's a very difficult job, what you took on. You took it on at a very difficult time. I know we had some very difficult problems approaches right away. I think you handled them quite well. I think if you look in the dictionary under gentleman, you'll see a Pat of Elfrink. A Pat of Elfrink. You'll say picture a Pat Elfrink. But I also want to tell you that I want to thank you that your finance department did not fail during this time, that you were able... Pat, not only was he interim City Manager, but he was also over the finance department. And he wore two hats during this time, and did two jobs, and it was very difficult. And I can't express my feelings enough to you for the appreciation I have for the job that you do for Holtham City. And if there was an employee of the ward, I'd give it to you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to say thank you, Pat. You know, as John said, we worked through some hard times together right off the bat, and we seemed to survive. And I just want you to know that I and everybody up here appreciate everything you've done for us the last 10 months. It's been an interesting ride, and again, thank you. Appreciate all your time. There's been many nights that I've come up here after hours, and Pat's been in his office working, so he worked... Yeah, or sleeping, as John's always doing. But no, he's working because I would go in his office, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Torres, any comments from you?
I can't really thank you for what you did over the last 10 months, because I wasn't here, Pat. But I will tell you this, I've been real impressed over the last week. As I mentioned, most of the council, you've gone way, way out there, well beyond whatever I should have expected in my first week here to help me out and get me on track on projects. So I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to working with you for a long time, Pat.
Same here, sir. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
And thank you, Mr. Elfrink, very, very much. I hope you understand that we thank a whole lot of you. I hope you understand that we value you very much, and we're looking forward to the days ahead in Holtham City because of what you will do in your department. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We've got some very exciting times ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two other presentations to make, and then we have one presentation to be made to us. Our first presentation, Fire Chief McIntyre, will you please join me at the podium, please? Chief, it is springtime in Texas, and that means severe weather. And I have a proclamation here to present to you tonight. From the Office of the Mayor, City of Holtham City, Texas, a proclamation. Whereas severe weather awareness week is March 3rd through the 9th, 2002. And whereas we all have memories of the wide variety of disasters that struck Texas in 2001, wildfires to flooding. And whereas each year brings the potential for violent weather to our area, and annually large portions of our state, including Holtham City, can be devastated by flooding and tornadoes. And whereas there is no part of Texas that is not susceptible to the impact of severe weather. And whereas the Governor of the State of Texas, the Texas Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and the Texas Department of Insurance, each and together urge all citizens and visitors in Holtham City to plan and prepare for severe weather. And whereas Governor Rick Perry has declared the week of March 3rd through the 9th, 2002, as severe weather awareness week in Texas. Now therefore, I, Calvin Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Holtham City, do hereby proclaim the week of March 3rd through the 9th, 2002, as severe weather awareness week on behalf of the council and the staff. And we urge everyone in our community to learn and to participate in severe weather preparedness activities to ensure their safety and the safety of their families in the event of severe weather. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation to you. And you have a complaint or two?
Thank you, Mayor.
For the audience, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to encourage all the citizens and community members that have issues concerning preparedness, severe weather, to please give us a call at our offices, 85 Monday through Friday. We'd love to answer those questions and help you any way we can. The number is 817-222-7727. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. My final presentation to make tonight is to Mr. Gary Clark. Mr. Clark, would you please join me at the podium, please? Ladies and gentlemen, if you don't know who this is, this is Gary Clark. Known Gary a long time, and he has rendered tremendous service to this city, particularly for the last 17 years. He has been one of our commissioners on the Civil Service Commission. And that's no small undertaking, to sort out employee challenges and opportunities. Gary has a brilliant mind. He's a genius when it comes to the workplace and to relationships and to laws that are going to impact how people perform and the ways they're held accountable. And Gary has decided to retire. He's been an administrator with Bergville for a long time. How long? Only he can tell you if he chooses to do so. But he's wanting to go to the farm. He's wanting to get out of the city, go to the farm, and enjoy retirement. And we don't begrudge Mr. Clark that one bit. But as he leaves our city's Civil Service Commission and goes forward to the next phase in his life, Mr. Clark, we would like to present to you for loyal and dedicated service on the Civil Service Commission from January 1985 through February 2002. The City of Holtham City is proud to present this to you. Thank you for your service. Would you like to address the citizens?
Thank you, Mayor Wyatt. Councilman, City Manager Torres, this is an honor for me. I feel like it's not only a duty, but a responsibility of each citizen to give something back to their city. I've lived in Holtham City 50-plus years, and hopefully, the 17 years that I've served on the Civil Service Commission has been just a little bit of a payback for what this city has done for me. I've had the opportunity, as a Civil Service Commissioner, to work with the rank and file of this city for 17 years. And I'm excited about the employees of this city, the future that this city has, the leadership and the direction. And I'm proud to say that I live in Holtham City. You don't have choices to who you're born to, who your parents are. And when you're a child, you not have choices where you live. I live in Holtham City. My parents live in Holtham City, and I live here because I want to. And I'm proud of this city, and proud of the opportunity that I've had to serve in some small way. So thank you, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager Torres. And Wayne Olson is a tremendous attorney, and the service that you provide, Wayne, is invaluable. Thank you.
Gary, if you would. Hi, members of the council, any comments you'd like to make to Mr. Clark?
We can go around.
Yeah, we can do that.
Mr. Clark, I haven't had the opportunity to work with you, but I've heard of your work, and what you have done for the city is invaluable, like you said. And I just want to say thank you for everything you have done. We do need more people like you out there that will volunteer their time and give to the city. Thanks again.
Mr. Clark, 17 years of being involved with our city. I appreciate what you've done. A lot of the work that you do goes unseen without an attaboy or anything, any thanks for it. But the words that you give Holtham City at the microphone just a few minutes ago about wanting to live here and loving to live in Holtham City, I appreciate that. I appreciate the years of service you gave us, and best of luck in your retirement.
Mr. Clark, I myself also have only attended one of your meetings, and I was impressed in your performance during that meeting that you had. And I really want to thank you for the 17 years that you gave to our city. I myself am not a native of Holtham City, but I feel like I am. I adopted Holtham City as my city, and I intend to stay here until they haul me off to the promised land. And I hope that you really enjoy out on the farm. I might get a chance to visit with you. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I haven't had the opportunity to work with you, but I do want to thank you for your time and your dedication to our community, and wish you well in future
I believe that you were probably on the Civil Service Commission when I was an employee here a long, long time ago. But thank goodness I didn't come up with any situations where your commission had to review it. I'd like to congratulate you on your retirement. Thank you for your many years of service.
Mr. Clark, I've not had the pleasure of working with you directly, sir. I will say this, 17 years on any one board in any city is a very long time. And I know you enjoyed every moment of it. I expressly appreciate what you said a few moments ago, like Councilmember Williams, your words that you had for Holtham City. I sincerely appreciate that. Good luck to you, sir.
Mr. Olson, I believe you have a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I felt obliged to talk because a number of council members have not worked with Gary, and I have. I've been your city attorney since 1987, and I've worked with him on a number of occasions at Civil Service hearings. And I will tell you, you're going to miss him. He does an excellent job on the Civil Service Commission. He understands the law. He follows it. He takes pride in his work. But probably more importantly, he understands the importance of being fair to all the employees that come before the commission. And I don't think there's any employees who don't feel like they've been treated fairly when they have a hearing before the Civil Service Commission. They may not always like the results, but they understand that they are being given due process, and they understand that the commissioners under the reign of Gary Clark were being treated fairly and equally in all matters. And I'll tell you, he was an invaluable asset to this city, and he will be sorely missed. I just want you to understand that, because I do deal with him on many occasions, and have since 1987.
So again, Mr. Clark, thank you very much for the service you render, and good luck in your retirement. We are honored tonight to have Dr. Larry Darlage with us. He is with Tarrant County College, Northeast Campus, and he is here tonight representing the Northeast Arts Council.
Mayor Wyatt, council members, ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. And the reason I'm here really is, as a representative of the Arts Council, I've been on the board of the Arts Council of Northeast Tarrant County for about six years now. And basically... And basically, I just wanted to come to thank you for your support of the Arts Council. The Arts Council has been in existence since 1975, and of course, most of you know that it resides at the Bedford Boys Ranch. And let me just kind of call your attention to some of the brochures that I've handed you, and specifically focus on the last seven years and some of the things that the Arts Council has achieved. We've created, first of all, just a great relationship with the City of Halton City, and we really appreciate that. We established a Masterworks program last year, and this, many of you probably have attended these at the gazebo, and it will continue this year. The Masterworks program is now in thirteen of the cities of Northeast Tarrant County, and it offers over a hundred performances each year, and the best part about it is they're all free. I've handed you also a monthly calendar, which we'd like for you to consider and maybe perhaps distribute and share with other folks through the Texas Bureau, Travel Bureaus. And I'd also like to point out some of the other things that we do. The summer arts college programs, many of you are familiar with these, are located in all six of the school districts in Northeast Tarrant County. Of course, Birdville is a major player in that. A grant program that was created about five years ago with the assistance of the Texas Commission on the Arts and the Arts Council contributes grants to, we have over the past five years, to 280 groups. These include schools, nonprofits, arts organizations, libraries, and the cities. And these groups have benefited with over $440,000 worth of grants that were distributed. Everyone who received a grant, of course, had to match this money, so there was almost a million dollars of monies that were distributed and matched to invest in the arts. This has been since 1997. As I mentioned, Birdville schools are involved with this program, and so have many other schools. In fact, in the Birdville District, twenty-five schools have benefited from this grants program to the tune of $26,085. A community arts program was created two years ago for the schools, and this is particularly helpful in those areas of Northeast Tarrant County that are considered to be in the low-income or the Title I areas. Thirty-four schools were identified in Northeast Tarrant County, and now each one of these schools receive at least one free arts-related program every year. There were six schools that have been identified in the Halton City area, and a total of nine in the Birdville Independent School District. We've also worked with many cities on festivals and events throughout the years and in their As a member of the Arts Council, I'd just like to call your attention to the fact that we're in fifteen cities, six school districts, seven chambers, and over 370,000 people in Northeast Tarrant County. And that's what we're trying to cover in terms of providing arts for this area. The impact of September the 11th has definitely shown the value of the arts. Many people deal with this in different ways, but music, photography, songs, poetry, stories, dance, drama, plays, artwork have all contributed to helping heal the wounds of September the 11th. And all of these are ways for people to express themselves and deal with this tragedy. People will continue to express themselves through the arts every day and everywhere, whether the times are good or the times are bad. The arts have a value in our area and will only continue to grow. As I mentioned, arts really strengthen all of the communities in Northeast Tarrant County and help to build these communities as places that are fun to live, fun to work, and fun to raise children. The Arts Council and the City of Halton City need to continue to expand their partnership and work together to make the arts grow in Halton City for their citizens. I really appreciate my being able to present this to you tonight, and now I have a plaque. If the mayor could go forward. This is from the Arts Council of Northeast Tarrant County and acknowledges Halton City for bringing the arts to your citizens in the year 2001. Signed by Cindy Laster, Chairman of the Board, and Carolyn Sims, President, with deep appreciation.
Thank you, Dr. Darlage.
Thank you.
And it's with honor, I received this on behalf of the City of Halton City. Thank you very much.
And I also have a booklet that was put together by Ray Perryman of the Perryman Group, and it talks about the arts culture and the Texas economy. Some good reading for those nights that you have trouble following.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it, Dr. Darlage. Come again.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. Thank you, Councilmember.
We come now to the consent agenda that consists tonight of items number six, seven, eight, and nine. Item number ten will be addressed when we address item number fifteen in just a moment. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number ten.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Councilmember Hurley?
That's a second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? There being note, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, we need to say we're removing number ten to move it up with item number fifteen.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you amend your motion that way?
I'll amend my motion that way.
Thank you.
If you will, gentlemen, register your vote. And that shows unanimous vote with Councilmember Jennings not here. The next item on the agenda is the Vister Citizens Forum. Ms. Harris, do we have any key? No cards filled out. We move now to the public hearings. Item number eleven, Mr. Torres?
Mayor and Council, I believe Greg is going to address this item for us this evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Is that on? Yeah. Item number eleven is continuation of a public hearing that's impact fee-related. There's four items that are for your consideration for this public hearing tonight. Those four items being the land use assumptions for the future growth of Halton City. Number two, the capital improvements plans, the infrastructure that's necessary to service that future growth. Item number three is consideration of Halton City being changed from two benefit areas presently to one benefit area. And then the last thing for your consideration is the assessment rate for the impact fees. At the last council meeting when you held the public hearing, items number one and two and three that I just mentioned seem to be the consensus of staff's recommendation. However, on item number four, the actual rate for the assessment fees, council wanted to see a couple of different fee schedules. With that, I'll turn it over to the city's consultant for this project, Diane Palmer. She has a few words she would like to say, then I guess it'd be appropriate to hold the public hearing.
Have you opened the public hearing? I think maybe you should.
I will open the public hearing at this time. I'd intended to after you made your presentation. However, this is a continuation of a public hearing that we began at the last council meeting, so for the official record, the public hearing is now open for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I was about to go into some of the details, I thought maybe that might be appropriate. I'm Diane Palmer. As Greg mentioned, last week, or a couple weeks ago, we did look at the land use assumptions related to water and sewer impact fees, the water capital improvements plan related to impact fees, and the sewer capital improvements plan related to impact fees. And we did that presentation, and the documents that you saw was all based on one benefit area. You asked us to go back and look and give you some information, additional information, on what the fees would be at different assessment rates. And as we mentioned last week, the law that went into effect on September 30th, 2001, I'm sorry, September 1st, 2001, requires the city to give a credit against impact fees. And you can do that in one of two ways. You can just give an automatic 50% credit, or you can choose to, on each property, try to estimate the ad valorem taxes that you'll collect within the next ten years and the water and sewer revenues that you'll collect within the next ten years. That particular option, in my mind, is somewhat problematic because you don't know what a property necessarily will be platted as and what kind of building will be on that property. So the information that we presented to you last week assumed a 50% credit, and we gave you information on what the fee would be at that 50% credit level. We put some information in your packet that is titled Table A1, and then Table A2, and then Exhibit A1, or Figure A1. And if I could just go through that briefly with you and tell you how it's laid out. Each of the tables are basically exactly the same except for the right-hand side, which gives a different assessment rate for Halton City. On the very left-hand side, it shows you what the water and sewer impact fees have been over the last applicable time frames, since 1996, when you set them before. There was a north benefit area and a south benefit area. As we mentioned, we're proposing, and you've considered one benefit area. So on the right-hand side, or in the middle column, you'll see the 1999 Fort Worth water and sewer impact fees. That's the current assessment rate that you're required by your wholesale contracts to collect on each new water meter coming into Halton City and each new either residential building or commercial or industrial building. So you have to collect that money and return that money to Fort Worth for building of capital improvements to serve new development. In addition, on top of the Fort Worth impact fees, there's a Halton City impact fee assessment. What's on the left-hand side is what is currently. If you calculate the fees at 50%, if you look at the four columns on the right-hand side, it shows you what the water fee at 50% assessment, the sewer fee at 50% assessment, the total 50% water and sewer fee, and then on the very right-hand side is the Fort Worth fees plus the Halton City fees all added up together. So that's the impact that you would collect from each property owner, well, actually from the builder. Another change in the law as of September 1st, 2001, is that the cities collected the fees at different times, and they standardized the requirements such you collect it when you issue the building permit. So this would be required of the person that actually pulls the building permit. In some cases, it might be a developer, in some cases, it might be someone other than a developer. And then that's on page one of seven, at a 50% rate. If you look at page two of seven, it's a 45% rate. Three of seven is a 40% rate. Four of seven is a 35% rate, and this would be applicable to both water and sewer, although I should say that you could choose to set water separately. A different assessment rate for water than you set for sewer, but we've calculated it the same on each of the tables. Page five of seven is a 30% assessment rate. Page six of seven is 25%, and page seven of seven is 20%. The maximum, and as we should maybe reiterate, the maximum fee that, on the table at the top, on each of the, on each table, the section at the top where it says maximum Halton City water and sewer fees, that's the cost, if you will, that a new single-family residential property places on the City of Halton City when they come in and ask for a water and sewer tap. That's what, that $5,738.09 is what it will take to provide service to that single-family resident. Water and sewer impact fees are designed to collect that money from that particular property owner or builder that's coming in asking for a building permit. By law, you have to give a 50% assessment, so 50% of the monies will have to come from someplace else. On Table A2, I've summarized the various fee. We did some benchmarking back when we were doing the study in January of 2001, and we collected information for the wholesale customer cities of Fort Worth as well as other selected cities in Denton and Dallas County. Dallas Water Utilities does not charge a water and sewer impact fee like Fort Worth does charge a water and sewer impact fee, but we collected that information. One of the things I would point out is that of the Fort Worth wholesale customer cities, only Halton City, Saginaw, Crowley, and Hurst actually charge both water and sewer fees on top of Fort Worth water and sewer fees. The other cities have some combination of supply in that they may have well water, that they are solely supplied by well water, they may have other sources of water supply like TRA or Dallas Water Utilities or their own. Many of the cities have different mechanisms to provide sewer service. Some of them have septic tanks, some of them have water or sewer service through TRA, some of them have their own wastewater treatment plants. So depending on how their service is provided, they may or may not charge full Fort Worth water and sewer fees, and they may or may not charge their own impact fees for water and sewer. So that, this Table A.2 is actually illustrated on Figure A1, where on the right-hand side are the total impact fees applicable to a single, this is a three-quarter inch, single-family residential meter. This is not an industrial meter, this is what a single-family residence would be asked to pay. If, on the right-hand side are, in areas where there's purple on the bottom and pink in the middle and blue and green on top, that's, those are Fort Worth wholesale customer cities. On the left-hand side, where there's just blue water fees and green sewer fees on the top of that, those are principally Dallas County and Denton County.
You're losing us, we don't have colors.
You don't have this?
Not in color.
Oh.
Unless that was a sub.
That's the sheet. Probably here.
I don't know.
Those went out early in my cover memo when I sent this out, and then the non-color ones actually went in your packet, so. But the cities over here on the far left-hand side, primarily Dallas-area cities, and these cities are, as she said, in Dallas's contract with their wholesale customers, they do not have impact fees. And these are primarily the Fort Worth customer cities, and Fort Worth in their wholesale contract, I think Fort Worth has 23, 24 customer cities.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three now. And with all those cities, by their wholesale contract, they're required to pass on Fort Worth impact fees. So that's what these tables are over here, and she's put Halton City in the middle.
The bars for the Halton City are the rates that are calculated on the table, so it'll show you a 20% to a 50% assessment rate compared to Fort Worth and the other areas east of here.
Ms. Palmer, anything further before we open this up to the council to ask questions, anything? Councilmember Hurley, your light is on. I'm sorry. I didn't. Members of the council, any questions, comments for Ms. Palmer?
I just apologize for interrupting.
No, that's fine. I thought you had that same graph that I was looking at. It's kind of hard to see the color in black and white.
One of the items of consideration that we were going to look at tonight were some of the different numbers from 20% up to the 50% impact fees that we might put in place that is allowed by current law. Any comments or questions, gentlemen, regarding that? Okay? I believe, Ms. Palmer, we have, you've presented this information to us, and I do thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Williams?
In line for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Since Councilmember Jennings is in here, he may want to reserve the right to say something next meeting.
Councilmember Williams, sorry to interrupt. Mayor, would you ask one more time if there are any public comments at the hearing?
Yes.
Close that hearing, and then we'll make the motion.
Yes. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against the item on the agenda? If you wish to do so, come forward at this time. Okay, there being none, we close the public hearing, and we're now in line for a motion.
Okay. As I was saying, Councilmember Jennings, it shows some interest in this, the last meeting, so he would probably want to reserve some right to discuss those numbers at the next meeting. So I would make a motion that we would table this until our next meeting, which is March 11th.
Table it or continue?
Continue the, continue the hearing.
We have a motion to continue. Councilmember Henderson?
That is for a second.
Councilmember Hurley, Councilmember Avery?
That was for a second.
Okay, any discussion, any discussion on the motion? If you would, gentlemen, register your vote. And that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 12, Mr. Torres?
Mayor and Council, this particular item is actually a follow-up to Agenda Item Number 11, and because Item Number 11 was voted to be continued, and because of some other information that's still forthcoming, staff recommends that this item also be tabled until the March 11th council meeting, where some action could potentially be taken at that time.
Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I make a motion we table Agenda Item, or should we continue? Continue Agenda Item Number?
Table.
The table or continue?
Table.
Your custom has been to table.
Table, okay. I make a motion we table Agenda Item Number 12 until the next council meeting on?
On March 11th.
March 11th. March 11th.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Markham.
Be for a second.
Have a motion and a second to table Item Number 12 until March 11th. Any discussion on the motion? Did you have something you need to say before we take the vote?
I was just going to offer to council that if they wanted any additional information for the continuation of the public hearing on their meeting of the 11th, I'd be happy to provide it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So noted.
Mayor, I might just announce to anybody who's watching or anybody in the audience that the public hearing will be here in the council chambers at 7:30 on March the 11th, if anybody's interested in attending.
Okay.
Maybe the local paper will get that in there.
If you will, gentlemen, just register your vote, and that carries by unanimous vote. We come now to Item Number 13, and this too is a continuation from a previous council meeting. Mr. Torres?
Mayor and council, this particular item, actually the next several items are going to be addressed by James. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senate Manager Richard Torres. Mayor, councilmembers, Item Number 13 is Z-002-02, and this is a consideration action on ordinance amending the City Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended by changing the future land use map for the city of Haltem City, Texas, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing a self-reliency clause and providing an effective date. Essentially, this is, ordinance is to amend the Comprehensive Land Use Plan by including two parcels of land in the city, particularly two cases that have come before council before. These are case numbers Z-056-01 and Z-057-01. These two parcels are going from single-family residential to commercial, and the other parcel was from commercial to industrial.
Mr. Pliska has introduced this subject. I'll open a public hearing at this time. Any member of the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance amending the Comprehensive Land Use Plan? There being none, members of the council, any questions regarding this item? Okay, there being none, I close the public hearing, and I'm in line for a motion regarding the first reading of this ordinance amending the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Councilmember Williams? Mayor Pro Tim Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion we approve Ordinance Number 0-2-002-008-15.
Have a motion. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve on first reading. If you will, gentlemen, register your vote. Okay, we have a unanimous vote to approve. Item Number 14 is another public hearing. If you will, Mr. Torres?
James Pliska will also address this item. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, CU-004-01 is to conduct a public hearing, consider the application of Mr. Gene Snow for a conditional use permit to operate an auto sales facility on property zone M2, Heavy Industrial District, on Lot 5, TRA subdivision, containing approximately .2341 acres of land located on the north side of Airport Freeway, locally known as 5719 Airport Freeway. Mr. Snow's application is for an auto sales facility on one lot of three. The other two existing lots on this site are located on Lower Birdville. The lot in question is Lot 5, which fronts on State Highway 121, and is asking for a conditional use to operate auto sales facility on Lot 5.
Okay, Mr. Pliska has introduced this. This is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing at this time. Any member of the audience wishing to speak either for or against the item under consideration, the application of Mr. Snow for this conditional use permit? If you would, sir, come forward to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please.
All right, councilmembers, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm Gene Snow, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I've been in the car business nearly all my life, and trying to get reestablished on Airport Freeway out there, and I'll answer any questions that I can.
Okay, if you'll just be available, let me ask first of all, members of the council, any questions for Mr. Snow? Members of the audience, any questions, comments, wish to speak for or against? Mr. Snow, we don't have any questions.
That's not fair. I wanted to talk.
No. Neither.
If you wish to address the council regarding this, you're certainly welcome to. Otherwise, we will move forward with action by the council.
Sometimes silence is golden. Please go ahead and vote.
Okay. Thank you very much, and if you would, go ahead and be seated, and we'll proceed from here. I will close the public, Councilmember Hurley?
Oh, wait until you close.
Okay, I close the public hearing at this time, and I'm in line for the corresponding motion. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance 02-002-010-15.
Pardon me for stepping on your tongue.
I didn't get it all in. I'm thinking.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Councilmember Avery?
That was for a second, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you will, gentlemen, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. We come now to something we mentioned earlier regarding Item Number 10. Item Number 10 is not a public hearing. It is an item that I suppose Mr. Pliska will be introducing.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, first we'll discuss Item Number 10, which is P-005-02, and this is to consider the application of Mr. Roddy Martinez on behalf of the Mar Fossil Ridge Limited for the preliminary plat of Lots 3 and 4, Block 4, Fossil Ridge Edition, being a plat of a portion of Block 4, Fossil Ridge Edition, containing approximately 22.39 acres of land located on the north side of Northeast Loop 820 and east of Fossil Creek Boulevard in the 4200 block of Northeast Loop 820. The purpose of this preliminary plat is for the development of that specific parcel that we just discussed. The site is located on the north, on the north of North Loop 820 and west of Fossil Creek Boulevard, as we discussed before, and again is 22.39 acres of land. The site is currently zoned MF2, multi-family residential district, and C2, commercial district to the south. The plat went to Planning and Zoning Commission at a special meeting called on February 21st, 2002, and Planning and Zoning did recommend approval of this preliminary plat, and I formally submit to you a reduced 11-by-17 copy of the plat.
Members of the council, you have heard the presentation by Mr. Pliska regarding Item Number 10, a preliminary plat on this property. Any questions for Mr. Pliska before I call for a motion? I believe there are no questions. I'm in line for a motion regarding Item Number 10, this preliminary plat approval. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I make a motion we approve Agenda Item Number 10.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Item Number 10. Councilmember Hurley?
I'd like to second that, please.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, if you will, register your vote regarding approval of this preliminary That passes with five in favor, Councilmember Henderson voting against. We move now to Item Number 15, and if you would, Mr. Pliska, introduce that to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this item is P-023-01, and again, to conduct a public hearing, consider the application of Jeffrey Wooten on behalf of the Mar Fossil Ridge Limited and Verdott Investment Company for the final plat of Lots 3 and 4, Block 4, Fossil Ridge Edition, being a replat of a portion of Block 4, Fossil Ridge Edition, on land located to the north of North Loop 820, west of Fossil Creek Boulevard, and south of Big Fossil Drive, containing approximately 22.39 acres of land located in 4100 blocks of North Loop 820.
Members of the council, questions or comments for Mr. Pliska regarding this? Let me first open the public hearing. Members of the council, any questions? And there being none, members of the audience, any questions, comments, observations, if you wish to speak for or against, if you would come forward at this time, and if you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Cheryl Ann Armiho. I'm with Glen Engineering. I office at 100 Becker Court, Suite 250 in Irving, Texas, and I'm here to represent the owner in this case. We've been working pretty closely with staff in order to resolve any issues and concerns that they have, and believe have done so, and I'm here to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Okay, members of the council, Councilmember Williams?
Mrs. Armina, we had a letter from your office stating on the apartments, the, said they were going to cut out some of the four-story. Are you going to cut out all of the four-story apartments? Will everything be three-story or less?
There will be no four-story buildings on this property. That is correct.
Well, I guess you've been with the fire department and went through the plans on being able to get our apparatus in there. Mr. McIntyre, can you share with us on that as well?
I do believe that Deputy Chief Langham has met with him and worked all those details out in the plan.
And y'all are satisfied with?
We are.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams, any further questions? No, sir. Comments? Other members of the council, questions or comments? Okay, members of the audience, questions or comments? Okay, I believe there are none. I will therefore close the public hearing, and I am now in line for a motion regarding Item Number 15. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I make the motion we approve Agenda Item Number 15.
We have a motion. Councilmember Markham?
Second.
We have a second. Members of the council, any discussion on the motion to approve? There being none, if you'll register your vote, and that passes five in favor with one in opposition. Okay, we're through with the public hearings, and we move now to the announcements and the events, and we have a number of those that we will address at this time. First of all, Mr. Torres, I believe you have an announcement to make.
I do, Mayor. I'd like to announce a significant technology advancement for the city of Haltem City. We recently upgraded our videotaping equipment, and we now have the ability to broadcast the city council meetings live. It's the intention of the council that, beginning at the next meeting on March 11th, we will be airing the city council meetings live on cable television. I expect probably a few bugs may be necessary to work out through this, so I'd like to open it up to citizens and anyone who may have any comments or suggestions about the videotaping after you've seen it a time or two, please feel free to contact my office and let me know what you think. I think we'd like to get some citizen input on this as soon as we can. So we're very excited about this. This is kind of a big step for the city of Haltem City, and we hope the citizens will find it to the suiting.
Looking out over the audience, when this announcement was being made, I was seeing some of this, and that's, that's great. Open government, more open government than ever before. Mayor Pro Tim Williams, I believe you have an announcement.
Yes, sir. And for these people sitting out in the audience, I don't mean y'all sit home on Monday night. Y'all continue to come. Our new city manager, Richard Torres, has just came on board. If y'all talked to him and seen him tonight, and we've, I think Councilmember Henderson had suggested we had a reception for he and his wife and his family. So on March the 19th, at the Public Library on Friendly Lane, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we will have a reception for city manager Richard Torres and his wife, Mary Lou, and their four children. And he's going to try to get them all up here and have them available, but so we'll be looking forward to that, and there will be refreshments reserved, refreshments served. And it is, I hope they reserve some for me. That will be March the 19th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the library in the meeting room.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Williams, and we do encourage all of our citizens to attend. Councilmember Patino, I believe you have an announcement to make regarding the Chinese New Year celebration.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Saturday the 16th, myself and Councilman Tracy Henderson, Mayor Pro Tim John Williams, and our mayor, we had the great privilege to attend the 2002 Asian Lunar New Year celebration, the Year of the Horse. We certainly had an opportunity to get to see some of the culture. I really personally myself, I enjoy very much the dragon dance. That's the first time that I ever seen anything like that, and I think I acted like a young kid, which I'm not. We also saw some great speeches from our guests. We got to witness the Chinese classical music performance, and we had an excellent food. I wish y'all could have been there to enjoy some of the good food that they had to offer there. And I certainly encourage that the next festival be the Mid-Autumn Moon Festival, which will be on September. I don't have the date, and I certainly encourage everybody to participate in that. It's quite an experience. Since our city is so diversified, and we have quite a number of Asians, at this festival we had representation from Korea, China, Japan, and I'm not sure if we had some from Singapore. And we had some guests there that's from, that came here, that's from Boston. So we really enjoyed it, and I certainly encourage everybody to try to be part of their festivities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Patino. Councilmember Hurley?
Just one second, Mayor.
While you're addressing that, Councilmember Henderson, I believe you have a couple of announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to announce again, the Citizens Police Academy is going to be holding its 11th session of the police, the Citizens Police Academy, starting Tuesday, March the 12th, 2002. We're going to be holding those at the police storefront, and they're accepting the applications up until that day. So we need to get a class form so we can get this, the academy going again. It's kind of stalled for the past couple of sessions. They tried to put together and didn't have enough applicants, and so we need to get this going again. I will be attending that, and if you've got any questions regarding that, get ahold of Sergeant Russell Ragsdale at the storefront. His number is 817-834-3456. And another announcement, again, this week, there's a Spring Fest, March 23rd, Haltem Road Park. It's going to be from 10 to 4, and it's always a great success, and if you need anything or have any questions about that, get ahold of, I believe, gosh, call Charles at the rec center. He'll know who to get in touch with. The number there is 817-831-6464. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson, and I believe Councilmember Hurley's announcement will not be made tonight, may make that at a later time. I have one brief announcement to make. I had the privilege yesterday of presenting a proclamation at the Birdville Church of Christ on the occasion of their 150th anniversary. That's incredible, here in our own community and institution that's been there 150 years. Mayor Pro Tim Williams asked me, were there any charter members present? And I told him, well, maybe one, but that's quite an accomplishment. We have a rich legacy, a rich history here in Haltem City and in Birdville. Across the street, the Birdville Baptist Church will have their 150th celebration next year, and across the street again from that, the Birdville Schools, and I don't know how long that's been there, but we do have a very rich legacy of history in Haltem City to celebrate, and I hope we'll all take pride in our roots and how we got to where we are and in the great legacy we have. That concludes the announcements and events. Gentlemen, would you like to take a five or 10-minute break before we proceed?
Second.
Okay. We will be back in place 10 minutes till night. We're back in, back in open session. We come now to item number 16, the speaker's request card. Councilmember John Williams had asked this to be placed on the agenda. Councilmember Williams, would you like to introduce the subject?
Yes, sir. I placed this on the agenda some two weeks ago. We've been using speaker cards since I came on board in 1998. And I think they're a valuable tool if they're used properly. And I was wanting to discuss how we can make government more open for our citizens that came to the council meetings and wanted to speak on various objects that we were discussing. But in pre-council, I think it just was well at the council. They won't wait and let the city manager handle this to a later date. So I'll defer to the council.
Wayne, do we need a motion to that effect since this item was posted on the agenda to just refer this item?
I would recommend that, yes.
Okay. I'm in line for a motion regarding Councilmember Williams' statement. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I make a motion that we basically give this item to the city manager and then we'll go back to the council with the recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second.
And I would like to have the recommendation by the next council meeting.
Is that reasonable to, do you need more time?
Helen? No?
Yes. The next council meeting is fine.
Okay. I just made myself a note to set up an appointment with you in the next day or two. And I think we can get that going because there's a lot of good examples out there. It's not as if we have to recreate this in any way. Just take a look at what some other cities are doing and get some ideas. So yes, we will have this item on the next agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to refer this to the city manager to come back with us by the 11th with a recommendation. That's the motion. And second, we have before us, Councilmember Williams?
I'm not in favor of putting it that soon. With the city manager, all the duties he has to do and being just now brought on board, I don't want this to be done hastily. So I want the council to consider that when they take this in consideration.
I can make it at the city manager's discretion. If two weeks isn't enough, then by all means, we can give you four. You just tell me what you need.
How about, how about if we work toward the next council meeting? And if, after Helen and I have had an opportunity to meet, if we see some kind of necessary delay, I will send you a memo stating that, that it might be pushed off one additional meeting, but certainly no more than the second meeting in March.
Does your motion reflect that intent? And the second reflects that intent?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that being the case, any further discussion on the motion? There being none, if you would, register your vote. And that passes with five votes in favor and one in opposition. We move now to item number 17. And Councilmember Henderson, I believe you placed this on the agenda. Would you like to introduce it to us at this time, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I think, I think this is going to be the same type deal as what John just went through. We discussed this in pre-council. We're going to let Mr. Torres come back with us, come back to us with some ideas that we can entertain. So I'll be up for, you know, I'll make a motion that we table it whenever his discretion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. You've heard Councilmember Henderson's motion. Councilmember Avery?
I'll second that motion, but I have one question. Now, you're tracing your motion. You said at the city manager's discretion. Is that within the next?
Same thing as on the previous motion.
Okay. I second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion and the second we have before us? Okay, there being none, if you'll register your vote. And that passes five in favor with one in opposition. The next item is resignations of board members. Councilmember Henderson, I believe you have a resignation.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a resignation of Ms. Alice Platt from the Volunteer Services Board. Just want to thank her for all the hard work she's done. And she's going to be taking on some new duties with some other organizations and she don't want to overwork herself. And she's been, she states in her resignation letter that she's been working with the city for the past 19 and a half years in different boards and commissions. And she thanks, thanks all of us and the citizens of Halton City for everything. And she will be resigning as of, as of today.
Okay. You have heard the resignation statement from Ms. Alice Platt is presented by Councilmember Henderson. Would you vote please to ratify this resignation? And that is by unanimous vote. And I would, Councilmember Henderson, I'd like to encourage you to provide leadership, if you would, to see that Ms. Platt is appropriately recognized, perhaps at the next council meeting, some token of our respect to her for 19 years of service in various boards and commissions.
We can do that.
Okay. I have a resignation and that is that of Mr. Gary Clark. You received that earlier in the week and we've already paid tribute to Mr. Clark for his work on the Civil Service Commission. But that was written notice of his retirement and resignation from the board. We need to act on that. And I'd like to ask for your support in ratifying Mr. Clark's intent to resign from the Civil Service Commission. And that carries by unanimous vote. Any other resignations of board members to be addressed tonight? Appointments, or reappointments to boards and commissions? Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I have an appointment to the Crime Prevention Board, Mr. G. H. Rumball. And I believe we have his address on file.
Okay. We have a recommendation for the appointment of Mr. G. H. Rumball to the Crime Prevention Board. If you would, gentlemen, register your intent to ratify. And that carries by unanimous vote. We come now to item number 20, the attendance requirements. Mayor Pro Tim Williams, would you like to address this motion regarding Councilmember Jennings, who's not able to be here tonight?
Yes, sir. I talked to Councilmember Jennings about 4:30 this afternoon and he is terribly ill, like the mayor said earlier. And so I would like to make a motion that we excuse his absence for the evening.
Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to excuse the absence of Mr. Jennings from our meeting tonight, if you will vote in regard to that. And that carries by unanimous vote. Having addressed all the items on the agenda, with the exception of the executive session, the time is nine o'clock sharp. The council will move at this time into executive session pursuant to Section 551.071, .072, and
On your way out, tell Jimbo happy birthday.